I don't even see our camera.
Thanks.
Awesome. So I'd like to call the meeting, planning board public meeting to order on, or at 7:05 for the April 26, 2020 hearing. Can we start with this?
Interelegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing on the agenda tonight for the public hearing is the continuation of 125 Development Corp., last year in New Hampshire, requested for a public hearing for four building condominium site plan off South Main Street in New York, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Block 27-3. So just for everybody's information, the applicant submitted some additional information this week. Was that released to everybody? There's the packet in front of you.
Right. You're print, I printed out copies there and I forwarded it yesterday when it came in.
Okay. So it's a copy of a traffic memo for the International Traffic Institute, the full level.
You're making your mic on mute.
I'm sure you can hear me better now, but. So it included a traffic memo, a figure that shows the proposed conceptual concept level of the site, or schematic design, and then it also included, I believe, a response to, or is it just Diane's letter? It was only two things, Jim.
Yeah, we only submitted the two items with the lever, a letter that just indicated what they were.
It was those two items and what it covered.
A response letter with attachments. That's what it was, the third item. So the applicant did not meet the requirements of the noon on Thursday submission for additional material. So I know some of you have probably seen this for the first time, and it also, the circuit rider, Ms. Rowden, was on vacation this week, and I don't believe our town engineer has looked at the additional information. So that is where we are. Additionally, Ms. Rowden, who is not able to be with us today, sent a revised comment letter, and we received some additional, or the initial review from the town engineer that reviewed and responded to the applicant's revisions to the drawing set. And I'm not sure if anybody has any comments on the, the information that has been submitted or provided to the board. And sorry, Barbara, I don't think anybody acknowledged you, but Ms. White is also virtual today.
Yes, hi.
Floor is yours.
So the whole paper street thing, it doesn't actually say, it just says if the paper street was dedicated to the town between this date and that date, and it would expire. It didn't say what exactly happened.
That's correct. So Ms. Rowden recommended that we seek actual legal advice on, and that's explained in, I believe, her letter and an additional email she sent out of where, you know, what is the outcome, or the, where that stands in the legal process. Additionally, the administrative assistant forwarded along, and I believe that came through Diane as well. Did the deeds come through Diane, Jim? Or was those provided?
Well, it would have to go through Diane because only the selectmen can control town owned property.
No, I'm sorry, the deeds that were provided on that.
The deed, I've been researching, but I've been, as time allows.
So Jim provided the board with a, copies of the deeds and then transcribed the area, you know, the portion, the no portion, that was fairly difficult to read because it was 50 years old.
That's the recorded plan for showing that extension.
And my personal takeaway from that is it states the connection for a town road. So I'm not sure if the intent was specifically a public right of way or not, but I think we, either way, we should get clarification on the use of that as a emergency access. If, if and so, that's where it goes.
Would you like me to ask counsel for an opinion specifically on those documents?
I believe that would be helpful. Do you need a motion for that, or is it just a request from the board since it's not our funding?
What about coordination with the Board of Selectmen? Where are we on that as far as?
As far as for the legal advice on the?
It seems like, from this, that it seems like the Board of Selectmen have to be involved in the decision-making of it, and I'm just wondering how that's going to happen, what?
I think, unfortunately, the gentleman that's right there would probably be best to handle that since he's on the.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Barry Guyer with Jones Beach Engineers for the applicant. We, from our reading of the legal opinion, that we would have, as the applicant, we would have to go to the Board of Selectmen and seek their authority or their permission to utilize that.
That's kind of what I was thinking would be kind of a step that would need to take place, yeah.
Okay.
Assuming that further legal opinion indicates that we have, well, the Board of Selectmen has the right to do what we're asking.
So at this point, did you need a motion to do that, to seek the legal counsel, or are you all set to do it?
As long as it's, it'll be in the minutes.
Great. So it would be legal action, illegal, legal, seeking legal counsel, and then it goes in front of the selectmen, and then it comes back to us. I'm just trying to think of the order of events before we even can take jurisdiction, because I feel like that's an important fact for us to nail down before we can vote on it.
Well, as far, as far as jurisdiction goes, I don't think that would play into, we have waiver requests for the lengths of roads in the, in the event that we are unable to use that, that right of way as emergency access.
Okay.
Okay.
So it sounds like then that would have to be, if we, if we were to approve the application, that would need to be in a stipulation?
If we were to approve the waiver request to.
Right.
Accept the roadway distance, we would have to prior, well, let me rephrase that. If we're accepting the waiver request for the roadway distance, I don't think it, it matters either way, with the exception of, are we accepting the waiver because it's more than 1,000 feet, or are we accepting the waiver because they're providing access via another route that we have or have not approved? Do you get what I'm trying to say? So if we accept the waiver request for the roadway longer than 1,000 feet, we're accepting the roadway that's longer than 1,000 feet, regardless of whether or not that gets approved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just so the, the board and the public knows, I did speak to the chief briefly.
Fire chief, right?
The fire chief, and in his opinion, and I apologize, I don't have an email on this, but the length of the roadway at this point in time is not a significant concern of his.
It's what, I'm sorry?
Not a significant concern specifically, but he, they're still reviewing the drawings, so I don't think he, when I had a conversation with him, he wasn't dead set that it needs that access through Howard Lane.
Okay.
So they're still reviewing it, and I think the board should wait for their, their comments, or for them to attend the meeting, to relay their specific comments, but it, it didn't seem that, either way, he thought that the waiver for the length of road should be denied, or that they, access through Howard Lane needed to be approved for, for them.
Okay.
They did have a concern that, as currently shown in Phase Two, or this is Phase Three, is this Phase Three?
Phase Two.
Phase Two, that there's two puzzle lanes. There's a puzzle lane south, puzzle lane north, because it's not connected.
Yeah, we, we could call it something else until we connect them.
That was.
But it is the intent, as shown on the, or the phasing plan, to connect them.
So temporarily phasing that there's, if there's a 911 and call it, you can wind up on the wrong side, and there's no way to connect them. So another comment that the circuit rider had was specific to the traffic study. The applicant provided a traffic memo with a usage of, I believe, Industrial Park 130 that provides, so I'm not making this up off the top of my head, a trip generated of .4 cars per hundred, sorry, per 1,000 square feet per hour, and that's for 207,000 square feet, which is Phase Two, which does not include the building to the north, which I'm guessing is about another 200,000 square feet right now, like, could be wrong. It was a recommendation from both the circuit rider and the towns engineer that a traffic study should be completed prior to accepting jurisdiction, so a traffic study is significantly more in-depth than the ITE trip generation, so, just for the board's information. Depending on the use, and, you know, they have to pick somewhere, and a light industrial use or a manufacturing use, there's, there's different industry standards, some are .4 cars per 1,000 square feet, some are .6, some are 1. You know, that's obviously, the higher the number of cars per 1,000 square feet, the more traffic, and a traffic professional will provide their best opinion of what that is. You know, I don't think there's, the Phase One has a significant amount of traffic, but they, they'll provide their opinion on how much traffic's actually be, could potentially be generated. Where this comes of a concern is that the proposed road location is fairly narrow, it's about 50 feet wide. The traffic study in DOT, New Hampshire DOT, since this is going out on the state right of way, may recommend or require a turning lane, may not require a turning lane for Phase Two, but where there is a likelihood that the additional area will be developed into buildings, my potential concern is approving a roadway as is, and then a year or at some point in the future approving, then there's, I don't want to say we're stuck approving the additional building, but they would require, you know, modification to the existing driveway permit, an additional potential traffic study, et cetera, to, you know, something where, if it's provided now, or prior to us taking jurisdiction, it would allow us to make a educated decision on the roadway itself.
Are, excuse me, are you referring to taking jurisdiction or approval? Because, you know, jurisdiction's the first step, approval doesn't necessarily come, you know.
Or either, either way, taking jurisdiction, we don't have enough information to make a decision. I'm not sure if anybody else has anything.
Do you think the recommendation that we can't take jurisdiction without a traffic study?
Well, if I may, the traffic study isn't a requirement for taking jurisdiction, it's a additional item that could be requested by the planning board.
No, I know, that's why I was saying, I was curious who recommended that, because I just want to understand where that's coming from.
I think we did last meeting.
Okay.
This is a ballpark that I asked for before they came, just so we had some idea, you know what I mean? Because we had no idea what it was going to generate, and I think before I asked for this, that we asked for a traffic study to be done, so, and you couldn't get it in time, which we understood.
Right.
So I asked for it to be ballparked, get an idea.
Yep.
Which you did. Thank you.
Yeah, we are meeting with, I think it's next week, with DOT for a scoping meeting for the project, because they're requiring the traffic study for this intersection. So to your point, Mr. Chairman, if future, if Phase Four, Phase Five actually occur, DOT would have another shot at it, they could say, we want another traffic study because your intersection is changing. It's going from 200,000 square feet to whatever the future holds.
So to answer your question, Mark, if we feel like we don't have enough information either way to make a decision on the application, we don't have to accept jurisdiction. So if it's the board's opinion that we do need a traffic study because of the scope of the project, we can, again, request that and say that, you know, we need this information prior to accepting jurisdiction. If we do accept jurisdiction, I think we could potentially, you know, it could alter our decision either way.
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara. I have a thought anyway, or statement. I would feel better if we got some sort of report or answer in writing from the fire chief as, with some specifics of why he feels like it's not going to be a problem to have it be, you know, that one road is going to be twice as long as what the ordinance says that a road should be. So I, you know, I would like him to state something that says, you know, why he thinks that it's, that it's fine. I realize that if the Howard Lane thing goes through, then it's not a dead end road.
To actually add a little bit of color to that, Barbara, the chief did have a concern about the dead end road. His, his comment was if there happened to be an accident, you know, this is a hypothetical case, but an accident at the intersection, and then a medical emergency or something, then it would be difficult to access the site. So that is his argument for having Howard Lane, or the access through Howard Lane. You know, I think he generally agrees that it's highly unlikely, but it potentially could happen.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So he didn't scrap or suggest, you know, either way, I, his opinion was, like, it wasn't the, the worst case without having that, that access road all the way through at this time, or, you know, the road connecting through the loop.
Right, okay.
Part of, I was told today, and I'm not sure how true it is, but part of that access road where it comes in, I was told that part of that is a right of way owned by the town, and you would have to get permission from the selectmen of the town.
You are correct.
In order to do that?
You are correct.
Yeah, we actually mentioned that briefly before you.
I came up here, yeah, all right.
So that would be one of our next stops, is to meet with the.
You know, I have to, with all honesty, I've been looking at this and thinking about this the entire time, and myself, I feel that as much as I know this town needs and wants and desires to have more, more business in it and whatever, I, you know, when I look at this, I feel that it's just slightly too congested for that small area, we're trying to fit all of that into it, and that it might be better suited if it wasn't quite so much there on that site, because my concerns are the aqua, that the residents were talking about the amount of wells that are going to be needed, the septic systems, all of that concerned me with the abutters that are taking place, you know what I mean, and all the, and all the other variances as far as that goes. And I, I would think that maybe if things kind of got, like I said, a little less and maybe moved a few pieces around, that it might fit better in that, in that position, and we wouldn't be looking for quite so many acceptances to the variances that are going forth here. And this way here, it wouldn't be a waste of time to keep looking for the variances and all these things, and that we wouldn't be wasting both Mr. McDonough's time and money in doing so. So I don't know if maybe you had another plan that you might have for this piece of property with like one less building or something that you could come up with that might better suit it and allow things to go forward a lot sooner, because my feeling is if we took jurisdiction, I would vote this down, to be quite honest with you right now.
I appreciate your opinion. We, we don't have another proposal in front of the board. We do believe that this fits the site, even though you may believe it's congested, we do meet the requirements. There are some buffer impacts, yes, we understand that. We, the only wetland impacts we have are actually for the road construction, so we're not impacting the, the wetland for any building or what we would call site development, only the road work. Septics and wells, well, let's go back to stormwater, you talked about the aquifer, we are recharging most of our stormwater.
Yeah.
Treatment is through infiltration basins, which will recharge the aquifer. Industrial commercial is a very light user of septic systems, it's just the people that are there. If you crowd this with as many houses as you would typically see, I know it's industrial, light industrial commercial, but there would be much more septic and well usage from homes than there is for an industrial.
Right, well, I mean, part of that is because one of the other things is you're thinking about putting the condominium housing development in there too, right, is one of the further steps?
We're, right now, this is Phase Two.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, so all this starts with this, and then there's these other pieces that are going to be getting added in.
Which the board can either vote up or down when we come to it.
Right.
And those are part of a variance, so they potentially could, may not happen.
Yeah, so we have to only generally look at the.
Be concerned with what's here today.
Yep.
I understand that, but I just wanted to make it, put that out there about later down the road too.
Sure, we appreciate your opinion on that, you know. So, Mr. Chairman, we did receive the comment letters, or update of the comment letters from the town planner and the town review engineer. There are a few additional items, and I, you've covered some of those already, items to address, but the majority of them have been addressed and are easily resolved. We are still waiting on the ZBA for input on some of the items, including the wetland buffer impacts, and some of the location of items such as septic locations, and light poles, and some other items such as that. We did receive the legal advice from the attorney, and as we indicated, we'll, the board's seeking additional legal advice, and we are going to try to get onto the Board of Selectmen's agenda to discuss that as well. We were hoping that the board could accept the plans tonight, or we can continue discussing. There are three waivers that we are requesting regarding the septic locations and the length of the road waivers. We can go over those, or we can answer any other questions the board has.
I have one more question specific to the DOT permit, or your, did you say you had an application or pre-application meeting next week?
Correct.
If they require a traffic study or realignment of that roadway, and this moved forward tonight, are you planning to come back here with revised drawings?
We're not anticipating the board approve the project tonight, as it says, because there's a few items out there. But either way, we do have items to, to dot the i's, cross the t's from the town engineer that will require another submittal. The DOT is asking for a scoping session in which they decide how far up and down Route 108 they want to look, that's what the scoping session is on, on Monday, then we can put together a traffic study, which will tell us if there's improvements up or down 108 that need to be completed, or just at the intersection, and then what those improvements at the intersection are. Excuse me. So if there are improvements such as turn lanes, such as a, a turn lane off of 108, or an additional turn lane, left-hand turn off of industrial way, those would all have to come back for approval by the board. Does that answer your question, sorry?
It, it does, and I guess one of my concerns is without this information on exactly what the roadway is doing, our clock starts once we take jurisdiction.
Well, if I may, this is one of my pet peeves with boards. Once you take jurisdiction, say we, the jurisdiction expires and we haven't provided you, the applicant, we haven't provided you the information you requested, you vote no, right? It's the board, if, if, if we get to that point and we haven't met the requirements of the board, that's on the applicant, not on the board.
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion to accept jurisdiction.
Yeah, second.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Few manors.
I do want to hear about the three waivers, specifically, that we're planning on addressing.
So I'd be happy to go through the waivers with you if I can find them. The, the two regarding the sewage may be moot because the board accepted them, but we were asking for a waiver to Site Plan Regulation 7.1.5H, which requires we show all the sewage facilities on the plan. We do show the sewage facilities, we don't show all the details with them because we are in, at the ZBA for variance on their location. So prior to the approval of the site plan, the board will have, and the town engineer will have looked at, the septic plans for all of the buildings. The next request, the variance request, was to 7.215.B.3, and that has a, it's the requirement that a hydro geological study be performed for, I believe it's anything over 2,000 gallons on a lot.
25.
What's, 2,500 gallons, sorry. Until we know exactly where the septic systems are going, and if they can go where we're proposing them, it's kind of a moot point because we'd have to do it again, that was why we were asking for. have to do it again. That was why we were asking for that waiver. The third waiver was to the appendix B 2.8, which is the dead-end street not being more than 1,000 feet in length.
Can I ask a general question about the phasing? Is there, I'm sure there's a reason why the roadway is not being connected at this time, and you're seeking connection through Howard Lane? Is there a possibility of, and I'm not sure of anybody else's opinion on this, is to connect the entire road and not have that connection through Howard Lane?
It's road costs. Road costs are astronomical right now. So, and I know in prior iterations of this project, it was shown that that would connect immediately. I actually talked the applicant into, why don't you take it bite-wise, because the road costs are so astronomical that you only want to construct what you need at the time. So we know, I mean, if this project proceeds and if Phase Four and Five go as planned, that maybe within a year or two of Phase One approval or Phase Two approval, we'll be connecting them. But that is why we're not showing it connected at this time.
Okay. And I haven't received, or we haven't received, any comments from Howard Lane folks, and I don't know if there's anybody on the call. And I understand both the cost of the roadway and, you know, that is a, I'll say, potential option. My concerns are just disturbing their neighborhood, and I know it's a right of way, if there's a way to avoid that. And maybe I'm totally wrong, that maybe the residents there want the access through. I don't know, but that's just, I'm not sure if anybody else.
Well, the way I look at it is, somebody at the Town of Newton was a good planner 25 years ago when they installed, put this in, because it was approved in 1986. So you have a large parcel undeveloped at the back of a small, rather short cul-de-sac. The first thing I, when I saw this project was, why are you building industrial way? Why don't you go on Howard? It's a planned road that the town left to access this property. The applicant said, well, we don't want to disturb those people any more than necessary, but an emergency access, it's a crash gate, it'll be shut all the time in case there's, unless there's a need, which makes perfect safety sense to me and perfect planning sense from the standpoint of the board and the previous board.
So it's not actually going to be used?
The intent is to never.
The way you just worded it, like, they're going to be using it, no one's going to be driving down this to get to his building. I would, right, right.
That's where I'm going.
General, yeah, I would, yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't anticipate it being used.
At all.
At all.
Yeah.
Other than when it's being built, and I don't, I haven't had any feedback either way that, you know, it's. I mean, I understand. If they were going to use it, use it, then that'd be a whole different story. I'm sure the whole, it would be a repeat of the other night, but, and I don't think you guys want that. So it's locked gate, and it's only for emergencies.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I can see that.
I'd like to kind of piggyback on what Ms. White said about getting the fire chief's comments in writing before addressing this. I'd feel more comfortable with that.
I would, I will try to work on that, or I will send him an email.
And thank you very much for speaking with him, you know, appreciate that, but I'd really like to, to have that.
And he did mention that, I believe you guys have been in contact with him about sprinklers or cisterns or something else, and I'm like, I'm more, you know, personally.
We speak to him.
So.
Just invite him here.
We've tried.
Oh, he doesn't want to come.
I will personally work on getting some feedback from the chief, or if Ziggy attends, I think he has a set of the drawings as well, and he's on the board, or is an alternate. Yeah.
Also, on the other two. I'm sorry.
Sorry. This is Barbara. I have a question, and I'm not sure when we would need to address it, but I guess if the selectmen give the applicant the permission to use that as emergency exit, somewhere along with that has to be whoever is responsible, who's going to be taking care of the maintenance of that? I know it's not going to be used as a road on a regular basis, but they're going to have to do some, I don't know whether, I don't know what the terrain is like there. They may have to do some erosion control or plant some grass there or something, so somebody's going to have to maintain it so nothing gets real high. So that might be something that has to be talked about when the selectmen say okay.
Absolutely. The intent of the applicant is to obviously construct it and to maintain it, and that includes snow removal.
Oh, thank you.
In a similar way, on the other two waiver requests, I'd feel more comfortable having more detail from ZBA on their decisions before we address those. So I'd rather, I'd feel more comfortable deferring our decision on whether those, to grant those waivers.
Yeah, if the waivers aren't, I mean, if the variances aren't granted, then the waivers become moot, because we will locate them in a different location than they're shown on the, on the current iteration, and we will show all the design information included.
I think that those are, this is Barbara, I think that those would be conditions, and I don't think that we can wait for the ZBA to make their decision. We could just put it as a condition.
I would agree with that, Barbara, because I don't think, they won't hear the project until we, I believe, make a condition for the waiver approval. Correct?
Okay.
No, you're kind of correct. We actually got a letter, Mrs. Rowden's letter indicating that we needed variance requirements, met the requirement for the ZBA to hear them. So the variances are, we are actually in front of the ZBA.
Okay. And what's the, sorry if I misheard, but the hydro geological study, when is that due to be complete?
We have, they look at where the actual septic is going in, and they just determine if it's an acceptable location. But because we don't know exactly where the site is, or the septics are going currently, we can't make a good, I mean, we'd have to redo it if they were moot.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Basically, because they're asking for a waiver because the septic is too close, they don't want to dig a hole there.
Yeah.
And then get denied, and then go dig a hole somewhere else.
Okay.
So I understand.
Dennis, it's hard to, sorry.
They're asking for the waiver for the septic system on the hydro geo is because the septics, some of them or all of them are currently in the setbacks.
The 200-foot structure setback.
So they, they want to get approval to locate the septics there prior to digging the test pits. And I'm guessing if the test pits fail, you're going to relocate them anyways.
No, we've already dug test pits and everything. It's just a matter of.
For the hydro geo study.
Right, doing the hydro geological study, but, which is not going to show anything because it's 147 acres and what's a very small amount of septic comparatively.
And then in terms of water usage, to go back to your point, Bob, have there, can you clarify again, have there been studies done about that? And in terms of the neighboring properties, like, are we, where everything is, I'm trying to get a sense of usage there.
So we don't typically do aquifer studies. When you do the septic system design, obviously when you're pulling water out or putting it in, it's the same water that's coming out. But the state will look at that, and they have regulations regarding how much water is coming out. And if they believe that it, when we get our septic approvals and our state subdivision approvals, if they determine that we need a different study, then that's when the state kicks in. But it, there's plenty of water, I mean, just from experience, and these industrial uses, unless there are users that has a high water usage, which we don't anticipate, that there's not, never an issue with the water.
Are there going to be stipulations about high water usage for any of your, in the lease?
We would, we'd have to look at that. I don't know if we've discussed that to that degree yet.
That's a concern for me, because if you're going to be putting some light industrial in there that requires high water usage, and that's not going to, I mean.
Well, the state regulates the water usage, so whatever we do, it'll have to go through the state.
Okay.
So there will be permits required. It's not like we can just go out there and start pumping away.
Yeah, okay.
How many wells?
Well, right now, we're proposing one for each building, so four.
Wasn't sure if you were going to do like water tank and, you know.
Or community water system, you know, there's thoughts of that, but it's normally easier to have your water, your septic, your stormwater treatment. So that's what we try to do on these kind of projects.
Pain to, it's more difficult to permit from a DES standpoint, depending on how many people you're serving. So there's three waivers in front of us. We have the hydro study for the septics, the roadway, and why am I forgetting the third one?
The third one is the, oh, the roadway and the septic, right? The study, the septic and location in the roadway. Is that right?
Yeah, so the first one is the sewage facilities.
Thank you.
It lacks some of the details, so that's what ZBA for locations. Second one is the hydro geological study. The third one is the dead-end street, not more than 1,000 feet in length.
So I would suggest that the two, for the sewage, that I would suggest the board wait on those because they may become moot. As far as the road length, until we hear from the Board of Selectmen and the town's attorney's opinion, that issue may change in your, in your opinion, depending on if we can access through Howard or not. So that one, I would suggest that the board wait on as well.
I'd agree with that.
I would also prefer a traffic study, and I still think we have the jurisdiction or the ability to request one to decide on the waiver.
How long do those typically take?
I'm guessing you've already started it, or?
Traffic study? They're starting it, but until they, until we meet with DOT to determine the extent of it, it's really, you know, that's the meat.
And you said that was next week?
Well, I believe it's the fifth I'm meeting with.
Okay.
You're meeting with the fifth anyways, and then you have regardless, some homework to do with the Board of Selectmen and.
And we're in front of the ZBA.
In front of the ZBA.
Do we wait? Do we wait? Yeah, that's what I'm comfortable with. I do want that traffic study, too, because I think, I mean, this, thank you for doing this estimate. I mean, it is helpful guidance, but I think we need more detail still.
And, you know, from personal experience, they could be totally spot-on, could be low, you know, their numbers, I should say, could be high. It all depends on who you get in there. It's a, it's a dart on the wall. The traffic study provides more, but, you know, there are.
Still a dart on the wall.
You know, they, I think most of the people, or most of your occupants on Phase One, there's not a lot of vehicles going in there. But if, you know, for whatever reason, and maybe it's great, you get a huge manufacturing facility in there or something, you know, there could be three shifts coming in, a lot of traffic. And I think, you know, having those parameters would help the board make a better decision. And, you know, that's just, it could go either way. And I know, I think your goal is, you know, light industrial and storage and stuff like that, but I think it would provide some context for us to make an opinion on. And you did receive the other comments from the town engineer. There was a few items that still need to be addressed.
Correct.
They were fairly minor.
Yeah, those were fairly minor. We can address those. No issue.
Ms. White, do you have any other comments?
I was just going to wonder if the applicant would, if he thinks that he's going to have a good portion of the information that we asked for by the next meeting, which is the 10th, or if he wanted to wait until the meeting after that, which is the 24th?
I'm not a traffic engineer, so we're not preparing the traffic study. So I would ask the board to continue us for two weeks, and then I will check with the traffic engineer in the next couple of days and see what their, their intent is for the traffic study. And then we can either, we'll ask for a continuance if they're not going to have it ready.
Jim, is there anything on the agenda for next?
No.
Not, okay. Sorry, not next month, the 10th.
Now that you've taken jurisdiction, the continuance is yours.
Okay, this is the, this would be the only potential item.
Right.
Okay, so that would be appreciated if you could let us know.
Yeah, I'll try to get right on him and see what the, what his schedule is. I know everybody's very busy right now, understaffed.
So do you, somebody want to make a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
If, point of order, you didn't give the public a chance, did I?
Oh, I apologize. Other hands?
Just a reminder that any paperwork would have to be in by next, by Thursday, May 5th at noon.
So Thursday, May 5th at noon. And I apologize to the public. Is there anybody via Zoom or in the audience? Yes, please.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Beck, 20 Ridgewood Road. I am in Plastile. I am abut to this property. Just two comments. We are a public utility for our water. We own our own water system. We, we're monitored by the DES, so our water supply is very important to us and any impact to it. And this property does fall within our aquifer. So again, just keeping that in mind when any decisions are made. The other thing is, the part of this plan, I know we're only looking at Phase Two, and I understand.
And come in for a sec.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Continue.
So I understand this is only to view Phase Two, and I appreciate that. I believe Mr. McDonough's engineer even said himself that the road costs were exorbitant. I know this was brought up last time, but there is a cul-de-sac that goes far beyond the current development across the gas line easement, and it doesn't seem to make sense if.
I'd like to say I want to speak something.
Can you possibly mute him?
I don't know. I'd like to say I want to speak.
So, again, those are my only two comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Jeffries, 12 Ridgewood Road. As we mentioned, and Steve mentioned, my big concern is this cul-de-sac, which to me looks like we're building the road before we get approval for the next section. You know, we're already, we, you know, so he's already starting the road before he's got permission for the next portion. And that's, to me, what it looks like. And that's, that's our concern, and that brings it right up to, that cul-de-sac is right parallel with Steve's property. And it just seems like it's a cul-de-sac that goes to nowhere, except that it starts his road around, that he hasn't gotten approval for the other phases yet.
Excuse me? Can, can I?
Mr. Coleman, would you like the floor?
Yes. My name's Coleman McDonough. I'm the owner of the project. Several things. On the traffic study, I'd like to make sure the board realizes and considers that we're going to do a full-blown traffic study like what was done in Phase Two with, with Phase, I mean, Phase One. We're going to do Phase Two, you know, with the same person, Steve Parnell. But I also want to highlight to the board that, I mean, the traffic that we're going to bring on to the state highway, we're probably, I'm probably exaggerating, we're probably only going about 40 feet into the town. So after you pass the Town of Newton sign, you're going to turn a left or a right, whichever way you're coming from. And I think most of the people would be coming from Massachusetts and. And I think most of the people would be coming from Massachusetts and, you know, 95, 495. I just wanted to say that, that one, one thing, and that it's concealed. I mean, a lot of people don't really even know where the project is in town. That's how much it's concealed with, you know, traffic flow and, you know, line of sight with, you know, all the buildings. I also want to, I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to the town with a right to know that back, and this has been brought up several times, again, this is going to be a private roadway. And back, umpteen many years ago, I'm going to say probably 14 years ago, we were asked to buy the town when we first started this project as a developer. They, they said, the town said to me, we want a full-blown master plan. And we spent a ton of money back 15, 16 years ago with delineating 280 acres of this entire site. And we came up with a master plan for Phase One, Two, and Three, and the workforce housing. Back then, the chairman of the board was, is, I don't know his, his real name, but we used to call him Peachey. He was the president of the board at that point in time, chairman. And I know for a fact that I was at a meeting that we, we had asked the town for a waiver on the length of cul-de-sac rule and regulation. And it was granted by the board back then, and 15-ish years ago. And there is a plan that's been on the wall of the Planning Board office for 15 years as to the route and length of roadway. And at that point in time, there was discussion with Peachey, who was the chairman, and the board as to how we were going to address the length of cul-de-sac and the direction of road when it came to the residential section of, section of property. And Peachey kind of tabled it at that point in time. We're going to address it, that's years down the road, and we're going to address it when the time comes with either breakaway gates or no trucks beyond this point. However, we're going to handle it, it will be addressed at that point in time, and it's years away. And here we are, years away, and I'm going to address it with the town, because I know that that was voted legally and posted by the Planning Board that we were granted a length of cul-de-sac waiver. And that's how we developed this whole plan for the project. I guess that's, that's, that's all I got to say. And that, you know, the traffic wise, I think, you know, 90% of the people are going to be coming from 95, 495. It's a state highway, they're going to be using 40 feet of the town's road. I just wanted to get that, you know, addressed, you know, and across to the board, just, you know, so they know. And I know a lot of the board members, congratulations for your new membership. You don't know me. I've been around for 15, 16 years trying to do this project, and here we are. And I don't know where they're going to start looking for that. Actually, I think Jim Doggett was on the board back then, or just, just recently got on the board just after that. But again, this plan has been on the Planning Board office wall for 15 years. And now, here we are, 15 years later. I'm going to do a right to know to the town, because I'm kind of a little bit uneasy about this. We got granted that waiver, and we did all of this work and put this master plan together. And here we are, trying to follow. And we've discussed it with, in great length, with the Wetlands Bureau and the logging road. And we've, there's a lot of work that's gone into this project. And Evan Lewis made us prove that this logging road existed and has existed. And I think he asked us to go back to 1958 to prove that this road was there back then. And we did prove that to him. Tim Fuettner, my wetlands delineation botanist, who is going to, obviously delineate the wetlands and go in front of the state on the several wetland crossings that we have, that's all been proven out to the state. And they have basically accepted that, that this road was in place.
And I don't want to interrupt you. Can you please, would it be possible to provide that waiver for next hearing? I think it would be potentially beneficial to the board.
Or, yeah, we'll, we'll see if we can find when the one that was previously granted. Regarding the cul-de-sac to nowhere, obviously, we have a plan for the future. The intent is to, the construction cost, we want to get it constructed where we know we're going to develop in the near future. That's Phase Three. And so then that will move on. We don't, we don't have to mobilize again for the road. That's the intent of that.
Are you ready to get a motion to continue?
Unless there's additional comments. Is that everybody that's online today, Jim? Yes, please.
Make a motion to continue to our next meeting, which is the second week in.
May 10.
May 10?
This is Barbara, I'll second.
Dennis.
Oh, sorry. Can I have a call, please? Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Did you notice, by the way, I got your little thing taken off? When you said on the meeting, it said in red about not showing up via the thing? See that?
I looked at you, it was still, it was still there, I thought.
Nope, should be off.
So second on the agenda tonight is accepting of the meeting minutes from March 22nd.
Make a motion to accept.
22, thank you, Bob.
I'll second.
Roll, Jim.
Mr. Moran.
Aye, please.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
I'll abstain. I wasn't present.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's actually unanimous. An abstention goes with the majority.
And then second on the agenda, or sorry, for board business, is the approval of the NEPA manifest for a total of $1,688.53. And I think I got it correct this time, Barbara? I'm not reading it sideways.
That's okay, that's okay. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Mr. Guide beat you.
Oh, okay, I'll second it.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
And I would like to adjourn the meeting at 8:06. Thank you.
Thank you, goodnight.
Just so everyone knows, I'm not going to be.